The 19th meeting of the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners. Vice Chairman Faircloth has the invocation and the edge this morning.
Let us stand to honor God and country.
Gracious heavenly Father, thank you once again for the opportunity to come into this place and to deliberate the business of our county. We ask your blessing on each of us and each person here that we may do those things in your sight that would be pleasing and in the best interest of our community. We ask this thing in your name. I'm in. Go into the place.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners.
Good morning.
As you know, one of the many things that I love about my job as county manager is
recognizing county employees who go above and beyond the call of duty, and today we're going to do just that. This morning, I'd like to ask Mrs. Laura Scales to come forward so that I can recognize her for some quick actions that she took on January 9th to assist an elderly gentleman who was being viciously attacked by a dog. Mrs. Scales?
Good morning. How are you?
I'm doing fine. I'd also like to ask our Register of Deeds, Mr. Lee Warren, to come forward, and I believe Mrs. Scales has some family here today. Her husband, Deputy Scales, would he come forward? And also, she's the daughter-in-law of our Clerk of Court, Mrs. Lisa Scales. Please come forward. We're going to make this a family thing today. Okay? So I've just been advised that Mrs. Scales' mother and father are in the audience, and I'd like to ask them to come forward as well, please. And her brother. So let me tell you a little bit about the background of why we're here today and why we're recognizing Mrs. Scales. Laura was driving east on Clinton Road after work on January the 9th when she just passed the Cedar Creek Road intersection on Clinton Road. She saw Mr. Clifford Locklear on the ground struggling with a dog and yelling for assistance. Miss Scales stopped and tried to create a diversion by clapping her hands and yelling at a dog, also taking a huge risk for her own personal safety. The dog continued to attack Mr. Locklear, but Laura quickly called 911. Within moments, the dog's owner arrived and was able to gain control of the animal. Laura stayed with Mr. Locklear until police and medical personnel arrived. He was transported to Cape Fear Valley Medical Center where he was treated for some significant and serious injuries. But Mrs. Scales went beyond that. She visited Mr. Locklear in the hospital where he had the opportunity to thank her for saving his life. Some of you may have seen the stories on television, WRAL and other stations. Laura acted quickly, courageously, and compassionately. She didn't keep driving. She took that risk. She was a good Samaritan who risked her own safety to help a person that she did not know. It's with great pleasure today that I present Laura with several things. So Laura, first of all, this is an exceptional employee award presented to Laura Scales in recognition of your bravery and outstanding performance on January 9th, 2019, in assisting a Cumberland County resident being attacked by a dangerous dog. This is presented this fourth day of February 2019 by county management and the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners. And that's not all. In addition to that, we're giving you a voucher for four hours of paid time off. And in addition to that, if you'll excuse me just a moment. We dusted this off. This is the traveling exceptional employee trophy that you'll get to keep until someone else is recognized. We've dusted it off for you. So if we could, could we turn around and maybe her family? And before you go around and shake the Commissioners' hands and get a picture with the Board of Commissioners, I would like to recognize our Register of Deeds, Mr. Warren, please.
Thank you, Ms. Cannon, Commissioners. Thank you for your service to our community. Our office developed an award a number of years ago, and we like to think it's probably the second or third most coveted award in North Carolina, at least Cumberland County, after any award you all would present. At this time, we'd like to present to Laura Scales our Certificate of Good Deed Award. This certificate of good deed presented to Laura Forbes Scales for service beyond the call of duty, instrumental in saving the life of Clifford Locklear, for your outstanding contribution to the citizens of Cumberland County, presented this fourth day of February 2019.
How about if we get Laura to hold up, maybe with whatever free hand she has? She could put the trophy maybe on the shelf? Now can we get family and friends officials up here? One, two, three. One, two, three. I think that's good. Thank you.
If you don't mind, we're going to get back to work.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair. There are no changes to the agenda this morning.
All right, I call for a motion. Are there no changes to the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
All right, we move to approve the agenda. Those in favor? That's unanimous. All right, let's look at the consent agenda. Are there any items to be pulled from the consent agenda? If not, I need a motion.
I can talk for a second.
Okay, those in favor? Unanimous.
Item 3A, Madam Chair, is impact of partial government shutdown. I'm going to ask our Assistant County Manager, Mr. Holder, to introduce this item, and then Mrs. Jackson, our Social Services Director, is going to provide some more detailed information.
Good morning, Commissioners and to the viewing public. If you will recall, we did send the Board a January 14th memo during the partial government shutdown to update you and make you aware of the potential impacts that our services and our citizens would experience as a result of that partial shutdown. We are obviously pleased to announce that we have had a temporary resumption of services. I do want to emphasize that this is temporary because, obviously, we are dependent upon a resolution to the government budget conflict by the February 15th deadline. However, there have been some additional impact to our citizens as a result of even the period of time that we did have the shutdown. I'm going to ask Ms. Jackson to share a little more detail, but I do want to emphasize that, at this point, we are currently have a temporary resumption. We are hopeful that resolution will be met by the February 15th deadline. However, there are still a lot of unknowns if that date is not met. So I'm going to ask Ms. Jackson to speak to some of the details.
Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to share this information. We are very concerned about the Food and Nutrition Program, and so since the viewing public is watching, I just want to take a minute maybe to just educate the community about the program so that they will understand the terms that may be used over the next several weeks. And so the program is a federal program. It's administered at the federal level. It's called the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program. At the federal level, they call the program SNAP, and that's what most citizens know it as. In North Carolina, they have named the program the Food and Nutrition Program. They call it the FNS Program. What citizens most often know it as is food stamps, but all three are the same program: Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, which is SNAP, Food and Nutrition, FNS, and food stamps, all the same program. Our role at Department of Social Services is only to determine the eligibility for the program. It is administered in terms of benefits directly from the state. Federal dollars come to the state, and then the state issues benefits to the citizens who are eligible. Those benefits are issued every month in a staggered process. The reason why they stagger the issuance of the benefits is to ensure that grocers and retail have stock, and so benefits are issued usually to select groups of the population that are eligible weekly. So there may be 5,000 people that may get their benefits this week, 6,000 may get their next week. All that is determined once they come in and they're given an issuance date, so it's staggered, to ensure that they're stocked. What has happened with the federal shutdown is that there was federal dollars that had to be issued in order for citizens to receive their food and nutrition benefits for the month of February. There was some glitch. I don't know the answer to the question as to why these benefits had to be issued before January 31st, which means citizens who normally would receive their benefits staggered during the month of February all received those benefits January the 20th, which means the next time citizens will receive, citizens who are eligible will receive their benefits will be March in that staggered process. So what this essentially means is that citizens could receive their benefits as late as 45 to 60 days before the next issuance, which is causing the problem, which means that many citizens may run out of money. Even there was a lot of publicity from North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services that administers the program in North Carolina encouraging citizens to be cautious, to try to reserve those funds. That is a long time for citizens to go without benefits. We have reached out to our local food bank and our community partners. I personally met with the Superintendent of Schools to make sure that they are prepared and are on alert as there may be citizens who will be without food, I would say sometime around mid-February. Now you say, what's happening about that? Now, the federal shutdown is over. I was on a conference call this morning at 8:00, have been in communication with Department of Health and Human Services, who's been in contact with the feds, and so there's an issue. There's a problem. One problem is, the federal policy says that a citizen can go no longer than 40 days between the time that they're issued benefits. This federal shutdown has really created a situation where it could be over 40 days. Again, benefits was issued on January the 20th. Citizen may not get their benefits to February 15th on the normal issuance schedule. They are in communication with the federal government that has not been resolved. There's two options the federal government can do. They can waive the 40 days federal policy, which we certainly hope that they don't do because that means, then, citizens truly will not get their benefits until their next staggered period in March. The other option is that they can authorize North Carolina to issue the March benefits March 1st rather than the staggered March period, meaning that a citizen that normally would get their benefits March 15th could possibly get the benefits early in March. That has not been determined as of the 8:00 call this morning. That has not been determined, and so we are not sure at this point what they will do. On a positive note is that we have received information that March benefits will be issued regardless of any future federal shutdown that may occur. As you know, Congress and the President are coming back together in February to continue to decide what to do about funding, and so if there is another federal shutdown, we have been assured that March benefits will be issued. Anything beyond March, we do not know about. So at this time, this is the most current information that we have. We have, and I say "we," the North Carolina DSS Directors Association has been in contact with DHHS regarding what's the plan. What's the plan in terms of any emergency contingency funds that may be coming from the state or federal government? They are talking to statewide food banks. They're talking with the public instructions around free lunch for kids. Kids who are eligible for food and nutrition benefits are also eligible for free lunch. And so you may have high school kids that don't normally eat lunch, maybe eating lunch. And so there is an electronic file that's going from public instruction to DSS to let the schools know and all the counties which kids are eligible for free lunch, so to make sure that kids are getting fed at school. And so this is a major issue that we are concerned about. I will continue to be in contact with county management as we get information. It is changing on the minute, on the hour, and we'll try to keep you as informed as possible. At this point, I would ask, are there any questions?
And Madam Chair, I would also just note, again, for the benefit of the public and for your benefit, that everything that Ms. Jackson just stated about the FNS or Food and Nutrition Services Program applies to the Women Infant and Children's Program, or WIC, at the Health Department as well.
Okay. Are there questions? If not, thank you for the update. I remember you giving a similar update some years ago.
Yes, yes.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Madam Chair, item 3B is consideration of a resolution supporting the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council allocation expansion, and I'll ask our Assistant Manager, Mr. Holder, to present this item.
Good morning, again. Prior to the 2017 session of the North Carolina General Assembly, North Carolina was one of the remaining states in the United States that automatically charged individuals 16 years old and above in the adult criminal justice system. Years of perseverance, research, study, and education on this topic brought together a strong bipartisan coalition of support for Raise the Age legislation in 2017 that included all three branches of government, the executive, the judicial, and the legislative branches, as well as law enforcement and advocacy organizations. During the 2017 legislative session, lawmakers raised the age of juvenile jurisdiction for nonviolent crimes to 18. That legislation goes into effect December 1st, 2019. In response to the Raise the Age legislation, the state has encouraged local juvenile crime prevention councils to garner the support of their Boards of Commissioners in requesting additional resources to be allocated at the local level or appropriated at the local level to deal with community programming for these juvenile offenders. In your packet is a resolution that has been prepared by management and has been approved and endorsed by your Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, requesting such support from this Board. At this time, I will receive any questions that you might have.
Mr. -- oh, I'm sorry. Which one of you?
I was first. It was okay, Madam Chair. I was just letting the Board know that I am currently serving as the interim chair of the JCPC so that this Board knows that.
Thank you. Mr. Keefe?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Holder, the last line of the resolution says Cumberland County fully supports an adequately timely increase in local juvenile crime prevention funding to ensure the program expansion and successful implementation of the Juvenile Justice Reinvestment Act Raise the Age legislation set for December 1st, 2019. First of all, it's pretty broad. Do you have any idea what this is going to, additional funding is going to be? How much of this is going to be coming from the state? What is the county match? And before you answer, I do want to, just to show that I support this program. I think it's a good program. But part of our responsibility is being physically responsible. And just, do you know what those numbers are?
At this time, we do not, but we are in the process currently of trying to evaluate the array or the types of services that we would anticipate that would be needed to accommodate the additional offenders that would fall into this age range. We are currently working on our request for proposals for our existing funding. We received $918,508 under the current appropriation, and of that, the county does have a responsibility of matching 20%. That is the match, and that we would assume that that would continue to be the match for any additional funding. But at this time, it is too preliminary to kind of project what that additional funding would be, but as soon as we make those projections, we would be bringing that back to you.
Based on your assumption of a, you believe that endorsement of this, the legislature will continue to be at the current matching, the current funding levels, and the county would be at the current matching levels?
Yes, sir. I would not anticipate any increase or decrease to your expected match.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Booth?
That's kind of the same thing. Can we put in there that, subject to continued level of funding or level of support, or if it exceeds a certain amount, that we brought back again, but just, you know, I'm just a little concerned with just saying, "We're going to give you money." And we voted on it.
Say that again. I'm trying to figure out where you are.
Well, it just says...
Blank check.
Yeah, blank check. It just says, "to ensure future funding." Well, at what level?
And let me, and I think that for the Board's edification is that this is going to, the, it's not actually going to, it's going to go to the legislation, but it's going to the subcommittee. I think every county is just asking that there's going to be additional funds needed for those 16, 17-year-olds, and that they are asking that, I don't think it's going to be any decrease on the amount that's already there because that's for those that already currently exist. This is just talking about, this current amount is not going to be enough. We just need to make sure that they consider that when they look at the allocation for the next future. But I don't think anybody was, from the counties, were saying, "Give this amount of money." I don't know anybody can do that. And we're going to have even more issues, I think Mr. Jackson would tell you. They're trying to find space because there's going to be some additional space needed for the 16, 17-year-olds down with juvenile justice. And I was at a meeting and got slapped on the wrist because I said, "Will there go be any more money for capital?" And they said, "We don't give you capital. That's a county responsibility." So...
And if I can add, Mr. Booth, your endorsement and support of this resolution in no way precludes your authority to approve any level of JCPC at the local level. Just because the state makes JCPC funds available, this Board still has the power and authority to approve the receipt of any level of JCPC funding.
Okay, so this wouldn't be if suddenly they, the state tripled it, we're matching it in triple. This doesn't bind us to doing anything like that?
You do not have to approve any funding. No, sir.
All right. That's what I'm saying. The resolution in support of the continued funding and everything like that is no problem at all. It just says that, be it resolved, that we'll fully support and increase. I always like to know.
Yes, sir.
To where?
All right. Seeing no more buttons, I'll call for a motion.
We approve the resolution supporting adequate timely increases to the local juvenile crime prevention funding.
Thank you. Second? Those in favor? Unanimous? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nominations are next. I'm sorry. Did you have your button?
Yes, but it wasn't Dylan Ish that we had, but going into nominations, before I make the nomination, if you would allow me, I would like to recognize Ms. Katrina Tiffany here with the Board of Trustees over at the library, and we're glad that she joined us this morning. Thank you, Ms. Tiffany, for being here. And if I may go into the nominations now for the Civic Senate Commission.
Did I call for it already?
Yes.
All right.
You were about there.
Thank you, Mr. Evans.
And thank you. I would like to nominate Danee Morton.
All right. Are there other nominations? If, oh, God, y'all got to help me. Mr. Booth?
Greg Edge.
Are there other nominations? All right. Let's go for the Fayetteville Cumberland County Economic Development Corporation. Mr. Keefe?
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to nominate Mr. Don Broadwell.
Are there other nominations? If not, Vice Chairman Faircloth, we are ready for action on appointments.
You got one more.
Did I miss something?
We're bottom.
Oh, I'm sorry. The Cumberland County Home and Community Care Block Grant Committee. Is there a nomination, Mr. Keefe?
I'm sorry. No, ma'am, that was for my last one.
I'm sorry. I'm having trouble with buttons this morning.
It's okay.
Is there, if there is no nomination for...
Mr. Faircloth has somebody else who's going to go, that they recommend Devin Trego. D-E-V-I-N-T-R-E-G-O. That was...
Now, seeing no buttons lit, item five, appointments. Mr. Faircloth?
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, we have nominations and the exact number of slots available, so I'm going to go down the list. For Cumberland County Juvenile Crime Detention Council, there are two appointments, Gregory Raymond Kuntz Jr. and Stephanie Dixon. For the Equalization and Review Board, there are five nominations, that being Curtis Alexander, Marcia Mello, Charles McBride-Grannis, Derwood Clark, and Carol Beard. For the Cumberland County Local Emergency Planning Committee, we have two appointments, which are Gary Chu and Caleb Stoker. Excuse me. And for the Board of Health, we have five appointments, Dr. Kent Dean, Dr. Kingsley Mamadou, Commissioner Jeanette Council, Dr. Connette Mc... Council, Dr. Connette McMahon, and Stacy Cox. And for the Farm Advisory Board, we have two appointments, that being Tracy Gardner and Cheryl Jernigan. And at this time, I would move that these individuals be appointed by acclamation.
Second.
You've heard the motion and the second. Those in favor? Unanimous. I need a motion, please.
Motion to adjourn.
Those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.